Hi, good morning. I'd like to welcome everybody to today's city council meeting. Would also like to remind everyone, please make sure all cell phones are turned to the off or vibrate position. Also, please be advised, our city council meetings are broadcast on Comcast Channel 99, AT&amp;T U-verse, and the City of Gaston YouTube channel. This meeting of the Gaston City Council will now come to order. Chair calls on City Clerk Ivan Nelson for the roll call.
Councilwoman Latham.
President.
Councilwoman Smith.
Here.
Councilwoman Avery.
Here.
Councilman Back.
Here.
Councilwoman Wilson is absent today. Councilwoman Minatra.
Here.
And Councilwoman Robinson. We have a quorum present, and our meeting is open for business. I'm going to ask Councilwoman Latham to lead the invocation. Please stand and remain standing for the pledge of allegiance.
Let us pray. Father God, we come before you today first saying thank you. Thank you that you have given us the opportunity of life, health, and strength. We thank you for the opportunity first to serve you, then to serve our city and the constituents of our city. We ask your continual blessings upon our mayor and upon our city council, and upon those who work in our city and live in our city. We thank you for how you're blessing the City of Gaston. Thank you for the things that you've done, the things you're doing, and the things that you are going to do. We pray that your will will prevail. We pray this prayer in your son Jesus' name. Amen.
Amen. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. The chair will entertain a motion to approve the minutes of the work session in council meetings held on February the 4th. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to approve minutes.
The chair will entertain a motion to ratify payment of accounts for the week of January 31st through February the 6th.
So moved. Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to ratify payment of the accounts.
All right. Item 7 is reserved for proclamations and commendations. Mayor, you have any proclamations today? All right. Do want to recognize some special guests we have with us this morning. We have County Commissioner Craig Enzer has joined us today, and Commissioner Enzer, welcome. We'd like for you to, if you care to, share a few remarks. Glad you're here.
Thank you. I just showed up just to say hello and do some business with Mr. Hooks and Tina and tell y'all hello. And just to reiterate what we talked about in the work session was, we had David and I and Shane Ellison went to the EDAA, and I just wanted to let everybody know that we had good meetings there, not just in Edwah County, but we also, the City of Gaston and surrounding cities are all being talked about, and new things that are coming down the line in the economic development world. I had mentioned earlier, six years ago, I don't feel like we were on the map, and I believe that today, that from north to south and east to west, that Edwah County and the seat of Edwah County, which is Gaston obviously, is well represented, and I think we've turned a new page as far as who we are, what we're doing, and we're moving forward, not backwards. So just want to commend y'all for what y'all do, the cooperation that we have as far as the county, the city, and all the other cities involved. In the work session, the Drug Task Force deal with the City of Glencoe that y'all are approving today is just another step in the right direction of showing togetherness and combating the drug issue that us, along with everybody else, has, but we're taking the right steps to move that forward. So just want to say thank y'all for what you do, and just came to say hello, and if y'all ever need me or need the commission, y'all know where to find us. So, thank you very much.
Thank you, Commissioner Enzer.
And also, I just said something to Councilman Robinson. I'm excited about Nakalua Falls and the grand opening of the campground. What y'all have done at the lighting during Christmas was unreal. The trains, the lights, just the whole thing, the amount of people from out of town that came, and I'm just excited about the new campground, the new fire station, all the things that go on. And I know, I listen all the time, but you do get a lot of praise from District 7 at Nakalua Falls, but it's beautiful, and what y'all do as a team to make that great is awesome. So I commend everyone of you, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Enzer. Appreciate you being here. I'd also like to recognize, we have a special guest with us today. The Gaston Kiwanis Club has, for, oh gosh, decades, supplied the City of Gaston residents with millions of dollars, and most of that raised through Pancake Day. And former Representative Gil Isbell is a longtime member of that club, and I believe Pancake Day is this Saturday, is that right?
That is correct.
Wonderful. Well, tell us about it.
Well, I just wanted to come and thank you to the council, and thank you to the mayor for your support. The first Pancake Day was 1958, and through the years, we've raised and donated over $2 million to local children's charities. We used to see probably 5,000 or 6,000 or 7,000 people, we're down to 3,000, but that's still a pretty good number. But we have a great support from not only Gaston, but the surrounding municipalities and the county, and even people out of the county. I would like to let you know, though, who we do support, or some of the children's organizations we support, because the money stays here 100%. It stays local. Edwah Youth Orchestra, James M. Berry Center for Children, Big Brothers Big Sister of Northeast Alabama, Boys and Girls Club of Gaston, Edwah County, Girl Scouts of North Central Alabama, Boy Scouts of America, Greater Alabama Council and Edwah District, Gaston Museum of Art, Community Thanksgiving of Gaston, the Salvation Army, United Way, Christmas shopping. We had Christmas shopping in November, and we had $4,500 worth of toys for 100 children. We do that through the Salvation Army. We support ESOP's Fables through Paul Harbison, Wayne Ed Santa Charity, who we've done in the past, he's not as active because of his health, and also the Christmas food drive in Gaston. We also support other groups as well, but I wanted to let you know that we, as a community, we do great things. Now, 50 years ago, there were five charity events. Now there are about 30 or 40. So it's tough, and everybody's asking for money, but I want to tell everybody publicly, we at the Kiwanis Club, thank you for your support, as sponsorships, or coming to support Pancake Day, because the money stays local, and I keep reiterating that. And we have probably 200 to 250 volunteers that come and help, and it's actually a lot of fun, most of the time. But anyway, just wanted to come and say thank you to you guys, and also do a little advertising on television as well. All right, listen, thank you very much, and have a great day.
Thank you, Gil. Appreciate the Kiwanis Club and all the things that you do, and the charities that y'all support. Really is important for our community. Mayor, if I missed anybody else, we good, all right? All right, well, we'll move on to item 8 on our agenda. It's unfinished business. Item 8A is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2025 budget. This ordinance was presented last week for first reading. It transfers $275,000 from the opioid settlement fund balance account into the equipment account. These funds will be used for the purchase of police vehicles, which was authorized by Resolutions R-27-25 and R-28-25, adopted last week. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this ordinance.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 9 is a resolution reappointing members to Gaston Cultural Arts Foundation Incorporated. This reappoints Ally Causey, Helene Howler, and Mamta Mishra for terms expiring November 1st, 2028. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 10 is a resolution appointing member to Gaston Museum of Fine Arts Incorporated Board. This appoints Jennifer McGriff to replace Ricky Ray for a term expiring December 31st, 2027. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 11 is a resolution authorizing change order number 1 for bid number 3552 for the landfill cover dirt project. This is to reconcile pay item additions and deletions ordered through construction. The amount is $29,150, increasing the contract with Bedwell and Horton Excavating LLC to The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 12 is a resolution authorizing agreement with AECOM, that's A-E-C-O-M, Technical Services Incorporated. This is for engineering services required to complete a safety action plan, and the estimated fee is $327,415. This is required by the Safe Streets for All, which is SS4A grant, the city received from the Federal Highway Administration, which is an 80% federal and 20% local share. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Item 13 is a resolution authorizing agreement with Vector Security. This is to provide security access and control services at the Nakalua Falls Campground facilities, and the amount is $156.80 per month for a term of three years. The chair will entertain a motion to adopt this resolution.
So moved. Second.
Is there any discussion?
Yes, Council President. This will just happen. Turn off the microphone. Sorry. No problem. Yes, Council President, this is just going to give us some extra security up there. We've already had some, during construction, had some problems with some doors getting kicked in on the, on a women's bathroom and on a stage area up there, so I'm just decided about putting this up there and maybe stop some of the tonne filler that goes on with some of these people. Thank you.
Well, thank you for that. We hope so too. Any other comments? Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right. We'll move to item 14, new business. We have quite a few items this morning in new business. Councilwoman Latham, I believe you have two this morning. We'll start with you.
Thank you, President Beck. First is ordinance number 2025-092, and this is coming from the Legal Department. Resolution authorizing expenditure of discretionary funds to Gaston City High School for purchase of T-shirts for the student section at the regional basketball tournament. And this is budgeted for up to $3,200. And we are, I'm asking my colleagues to, I'm making a motion to suspend the rules to handle this today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Okay, we're excited for the Titans and wish them all the best in that tournament. The next I have is ordinance 2025-091. This is coming from the Finance Department. This is an ordinance amending fiscal year 2025 budget transferring funds from the Economic Development Fund balance to purchase property located at 2510 Rainbow Drive for Welcome to Gaston sign. This is budgeted for $40,000, and I would ask for immediate consideration.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the ordinance today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, we have a unanimous vote for consideration.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the ordinance, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
And can I say, President Beck?
Yes, ma'am.
That this is one of the four signs that will be placed at the interests to our city.
Wonderful, thank you. Appreciate the mayor's guidance on that as well. All right, we have Councilman Smith, I believe you have one from the Risk Management Department, rather.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. This is item 087. This is a resolution authorizing amendment of policies regarding the use of all city vehicles, and these rules apply to all city vehicles, personally assigned vehicles, personally assigned take-home vehicles, and non-personally assigned vehicles. And, Mr. President, this is basically to help us stay insurance compliant, and also to help the City of Gaston to stay competitive with other municipalities as it relates to hiring police officers. So I would ask my colleagues to suspend the rules today and pass this resolution today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, thank you. Councilman Avery, I believe you have one, came from the Legal Department.
Mr. President, I want to present legal document, or Legal Department, Resolution 2025-086. I'm just going to read this part here, whereas the City of Gaston intends to make application to the Alabama Department of Economic and Community Affairs for grant assistance to develop a splash pad recreational facility at 403 Tuscaloosa Avenue, Joseph T. Robinson Park, for the land, from the Land and Water Conservation Fund. Just a reminder, this is very similar to, or this is the same grant that was applied for last year, applying for this year, project projected at $1 million some odd dollars, 50% match, and then there's a proposal in here in the resolution as well. So I'm going to ask for suspension of the rules to consider for today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today as an item of new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
A move vote. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilwoman Minatra, I believe you have some as well.
Yes, Mr. President. The first one I have is Resolution 89. It is authorizing the amendment of Chapter 7 of the Employee Handbook, and I'm requesting that we suspend the rules and take this up as new business today.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Right, and I'll just add that this is actually concerning the definition of work hours, attendance, excuse me, and related to the sale of vacation time, which will take effect this October.
All right. That a move to adopt? Need to move to adopt?
Move to adopt.
Second.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Next, it is Resolution 94. It is authorizing an agreement between our Police Department, Department for Street Crimes and Narcotics, and it is an agreement for the city to work together to provide a mutual bond between the Glencoe Police Department and our city. And I'm requesting that we suspend the rules to take this up as new business today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution today under new business, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
Move to adopt.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
Thank you, Councilwoman Minatra. All right, I still have one more.
You want me to do it?
Yeah, if you can do that, yeah.
And lastly, Resolution 88. This is awarding bid number 3593 to Vulcan Materials for the asphalt mix that we'll be using for the new paving department. And I'm requesting that we suspend the rules and take this up as new business today.
Second.
Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to consider the resolution as an item of new business today, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, consent has been granted.
And I will add that this is budgeted in three different accounts for the paving of streets, and the amounts will be determined based on the streets that are chosen as we go through that process.
Move to adopt.
All right. Clerk, will you take the vote?
Those in favor to adopt the resolution, let it be number saying aye.
Aye.
Those opposed, motion carries to adopt.
All right, I believe that's all the new business for today, and we will go to item 15. We've got department reports, committees, boards. Mayor Ford, we have any of those this morning?
No, sir.
No? All right. And we'll move to remarks by the mayor and the council. Mayor Ford, we'll start with you.
Okay, as you see, we've been busy, and thank you to the council for passing all these today. A lot of good things are happening. I want to make some quick announcements. Court Amnesty Day is March 4th, from 8:00 to 4:00. The judge will forgive up to 50% of the fines. This is an important day. Last year was a huge success, so don't forget, March 4th, from 8:00 to 4:00 p.m. We started something this year called Operation Spring Cleaning for Gaston. We started in Walnut Park, and we implemented all of our police, fire, public works, every crew we had, and we're blitzing one area at a time, and we'll be coming to your neighborhood all throughout the council districts. And we're striping streets, we're painting curbs, we're filling potholes, we're changing out street signs. The police are knocking on doors, just letting them know we're here, and if anything that's their concern, we're addressing. It's, we've had great results in Walnut Park so far, a lot of good work going on. We're also looking at the public parks that are in your neighborhoods and your council districts, and cleaning those up and taking inventory of what needs to be repaired. So if you haven't noticed them, or you need something noticed, please go to your Hey Gaston app and report it. It's H-E-Y Gaston app. It's on iPhones and Androids, and it's pretty easy to download, and it's pretty easy to use. If you have questions, please call City Hall. Tomorrow is Advocacy Day in Montgomery. The mayor, the mayor's staff will be going, I'll be going. We're going to be seeing our legislators, and we have some appointments with our post secondary chancellor, and we're going to see our highway director, who's in Birmingham, at a conference, and we're also going to see a friend of mine, Chairman Bill Poole, who's the finance director for Governor Ivey, and we're going to see if we can discuss any opportunities for the city in those meetings. We have some additional follow-up meetings with Director Boswell, head of ADECA, and some other meetings that we've scheduled in Montgomery that will be also taking place. April 25th is the big citywide cleanup day. Last year, we picked up 12, I think over 12 tons or 13 tons of trash in the city, so we're asking every council person, which y'all always have done so in the past, we'll divide up, and you'll be in your own council district, but it'll be April 25th, and last year, we invited all public to help participate, had a great experience. We start at about 7:30, and we end up at noon, and we have lunch at the venue. The fire department and myself will be in the river, cleaning up the river and the riverbanks, and we have a good time doing that, and also, it's a big difference, we make a huge difference. So we're trying to do our Operation Spring Cleaning and complete it before April 25th and conclude it on that day, so we can show the results of that, and we're taking a lot of photos of the improvements. Please don't forget, we're very proud of our Gaston City Titans. They play Monday at JSU. Girls' basketball start at 12:00. We play Mountain Brook. Boys' basketball play at 1:30, and we play Huffman. Go Titans, thank you.
Thank you, Mayor Ford. Councilwoman Latham?
I got to excuse myself, sir. I've got a meeting.
Yes. Thank you so much.
Thank you, President Beck. Just to, I just wanted to say something, as the mayor was talking about our city and the cleanup day for April 25th. I may be a little late, but I had not seen the commercial for Team One Chevrolet, and it, I was amazed by the commercial, because seeing our city today and where it was just a couple of years ago is really amazing, and it's just a testament to how everybody's working together, and how we are, not just the mayor, the council, and the people here at the city, but even the constituents, how we're making assertive effort to clean our city up. So the commercial was wonderful, just seeing it. I almost didn't recognize that it was the City of Gaston. And I just want to say, I had a very eventful weekend from the, from the time of the Gaston Museum Art Night, I think it's Night of Jazz or whatever it was. Tada Jazz was the entertainment, they were awesome, and I just want to give kudos to the art museum for that night, and to the Super Bowl and the halftime show. All of it spoke volumes, and it was nice just hanging out with the other council members from Blueprint. I can't remember your name right now, but it was, it was a wonderful night out. And I made mention of that just because of the, where our, where our country is. It's good to, regardless of our differences, sit down and enjoy nice entertainment and just share in love, joy, peace, and happiness, and that, that was what the weekend was for me. I actually had someone, oftentimes, and I probably shouldn't say this, but I'm going to say it, oftentimes, when I'm out amongst constituents and just moving about in the city, people will say, I'm just glad that you all are not arguing. I'm glad that you all seem to be getting along. And when they say seem to be getting along, this is what I say. For the most part, we genuinely like each other. I had a guest with me at the event on Saturday night, and he was like, you all really have fun, you all really enjoy being around each other. So I just think it's, it's good, and I just want to say that it's not something that's made up for the 11th hour, but it's something that we really enjoy, just handling the city business, and also taking that time to just share outside of city business. Thank you.
Thank you so much for those words, Councilwoman. Councilman Smith?
Thank you, Mr. President. As everybody else, we're so proud of the Titans, so go Titans, and hope everybody makes plans to come out on Monday to support. Just want to recognize Commissioner, it's always good to see you, former sheriff here as well, Mr. Hooks, my good friend, Blueprint, and all the other important people that are in the room today. So glad that you're here today. What I'm about to say, Lord, I forgot what I was about to say that quick. Yes, the rib bone, the rib bone, it's feeding the Boys and Girls Basketball Team tomorrow, as well as the cheerleaders at 4:00 p.m., and Pastor Jones wanted me to make that announcement. So the Boys and Girls Basketball Team and cheerleaders, they'll be feeding at 4:00 p.m. Thank you, Mr. President, for all you do. Thank you for the mayor and the staff, and all this going on in the City of Gaston. We are excited, we do get along, we do have fun, and it's a blessing to be able to work with all these highly esteemed people sitting up here. Thank you, Ms. President.
Thank you, Councilman Smith. Councilman Avery?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. President. As has been stated, congratulations to the Gaston City Titans, to that team, to the coaching staff, and the school staff, as well as the parents. So hopefully, those that are available to go, please go out and support our young men and women that'll be in Jacksonville, playing their hardest out to continue a legacy of the City of Champions, so hopefully we can bring home a championship here coming soon. So keep working hard, young men and young women, in being successful in your athletic movement. District 3 has been doing the cleanup for quite some time, and so, no pun intended as relates to the city cleanup, but I'm going to look at seeing if we can change and move our date to partner. But... and move our date to partner. But I know that we partner with the State Alabama Pals, and so therefore, we have sponsors like Vulcan, Alpha, Coca-Cola, ACCA, Alden, Honda, that are sponsors with our cleanup this year, as it relates to Alabama Pals. And so, it is still spring clean, and it's in the month of April. So we'll look at correcting those dates. Also want to put District 3 on alert for our community meeting coming up soon. Hopefully, we will have our city engineer there that will explain the movement of the cranes that are there. People have been posting videos and making comments and statements. And so we want you to be educated and informed on the movement that are going, as it relates to the federal dollars that were used to address drainage issues. We also looked at possibly, I'll be making a recommendation, asking for our representative as it relates to zoning to also be present, so that we can discuss those issues that was related to, and a plant that was closely connected to community, to the community, with some issues, to make sure that our zoning also addresses things of that nature, and a few other things. So I do want to, I want to thank, and they don't know nothing about this, but I do want to thank Tina King. I will make it not, make it mentioned right now, for her efforts and all that she does, in particular, just on subject matters here. And then John Moore, as it relates to some conversations we have had, the Carver staff, District 3 communities, North Gaston area, as well as the entire District 3, small businesses. I do want to, I'm gonna present to the council for a possible resolution for a small business that I mentioned a few weeks back, that has closed their doors. But that was a, definitely a pillar to the community, have served our community well for 60-plus years. And then just encouraging those other small businesses, we're getting ready to partner with a group to help with availability of grants. I've sit on a couple of federal committees, and that, as, as the atmosphere has been set about grants and federal funding, those funds are still available in particular areas. And so I want us to be informed, properly educated, as we sit here at this seat, and discuss those funds that our local businesses, small businesses can apply for. As we've seen today, a possible grant has been proposed for the park at Joseph T. Robinson. So that is a testament that monies are still being issued out to our local municipalities that are moving forward projects that are need, are in need. So just wanted to highlight that. And there are some other things, just stay close to our Facebook page. And again, happy, and Black History Month, and continue to study, read, and educate yourself. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilman Avery. Councilwoman Minatra?
Well, we do love our sports, and the Super Bowl was pretty wonderful. And I certainly did enjoy watching Jalen Hurts and Devante Smith. And finally, a team of mine actually won, so congratulations to the Eagles. And please remember Friday is Valentine's Day, so you need to spread your love for one another, buy some flowers, buy some candy. But more importantly, just celebrate the day. Thank you.
Thank you so much. Councilman Robinson?
Thank you, Mr. President. I was wanting to hear Mike tell me, turn my mic on, but he won't do it. I love hearing your voice, man, I love hearing your voice. Thank you, Mr. President. I apologize to my colleagues for being late for this morning's work session, pre-council meeting. I had a few things that came up that didn't need my attention, so I was about 30 minutes late, so I didn't get the first couple of items. But I do see we are installing a Welcome to Gaston sign on 4/11. That's, the rendering here looks beautiful. I think it's gonna be awesome. I heard the mayor say four. That would be two on 4/11, two on 4/30.
4/31.
And then where's that one on? There's supposed to be a fifth one coming up, Reef City, into Nakle Falls area.
We're gonna have to put that on the. We're gonna have to, we're waiting on the price of gold to come down. We gotta buy that at the right time.
Great day of government, again, a lot of stuff going on. I like the police departments, narcotic people working together with Glencoe, like I said, in those neighborhoods with the bordering lines is, is an awesome thing that we're doing. And I thank all our guests and Commissioner Enzer, like you said earlier, it's just great what we're doing. Everybody's working together, all, you know, the county, the surrounding cities, so, and that wouldn't happen a few years back. And that's what was probably one of the major problems was going on. So everything's looking great, and enjoy it. And I had something else, but slips in my mind. Sorry, I was late. And I was talking earlier, I was, I was doing some, some reading on one of our events, and you called for somebody to bring something up on immediate consideration. And I was just lost. And I apologize to Tina King, too, because she was sitting there telling me, telling us about it. And I'm like, well, I'll read back on that in a minute, because it's not asked for today. So I'm over here reading something else. And then here, it all happens so quick. So anybody want to bring this up? And everybody's looking at me, and I'm like, I have no earthly idea what we have been talking about. So my apologies, I was gonna read back on it. I will never do that again. Lesson learned. Thank you, appreciate it.
It's all good. All right, it has been a good day of government here in Gaston. We are grateful for all the things, all of our blessings. I want to have a few points here. This Saturday, Mailman's Mutts Incorporated is having a spay and neuter special. They're gonna be selling spay and neuter tickets for $30 at the Eddawal County Courthouse parking lot. And they are selling those until they are sold out. And y'all, that is so important. There are three, you know, humane shelters in Eddawal County, and all three are overrun with cats and dogs. We have just got to do a better job of managing our pets. And I think that begins with owner responsibility. That begins with, if you're not going to, if your animals are not registered, and you're gonna have litters for, you know, to sell them to people that are gonna show them or do something like that, spay and neuter your, your pets. We have just got to do a better job. It is, it's at an epidemic level in Eddawal County, and it's just a real problem. So please, Mailman's Mutts, thank you for that group of people that are trying to make a difference. And it's this Saturday in the Eddawal County Courthouse parking lot. It's just $30. I think that saves you, oh my gosh, well over $100. So please go do that. Want to congratulate our city on, and our engineering department, and with our new paving department. This council at the mayor's budget, we approved $3 million in equipment purchases. This is gonna allow us to pave our streets faster. It's gonna allow us to pave more streets. And it kind of puts that activity in our hands. When you, when you have a few paving companies that are out there, and they bid on your project, and you award that to them, oftentimes, they can't get to it. They have so many cities that they're working with. So we're still gonna work with those companies, but we're gonna do a lot of paving on our own. So we're real proud of that. And I think we're gonna see that make a big difference in our city. All of us drive these bumpy roads. All of us are aware that we have bumpy roads in Gaston. We want them fixed, just like everybody else. So we've taken that matter into our own hands, and we're gonna pave as many as we can. Want to also congratulate Tina King and our police department, and Todd Entrickin, on coordinating with the city of Glencoe for a mutual aid agreement with the police departments. This is gonna help eradicate the drug problem in not only Gaston and Glencoe, but Eddawal County. Y'all, we can never do apart what we can do together. So we've got to have relationships like this, where we're working together with our neighboring cities and with the county, because we're so much better when we're doing that, when we're a team, when we're all on the same page, working together. So thank you for that leadership, and thank you to Mayor Hare and his folks out in Glencoe. Thank you, Gil Isbell, for being here today to tell us about Pancake Day, 1958. That's the year the president of the city council was born. So that means Pancake Day's been around 29 years. That's amazing. That's, that's really good. That's great. So that's this Saturday at the venue, 7:00 to 1:00. Not only is it a great time, you can see friends that you haven't seen maybe since last Pancake Day, but it's just a wonderful way to raise money to help the, the groups in Gaston at the Pancake Day, and more importantly, the Qantas Club help. So thank y'all for your efforts with that. Want to also thank Commissioner Craig Enzer for being with us today. Commissioner, thank you for your kind words. And again, back to saying about Glencoe, you know, six years ago, you're exactly right, and Councilman Robinson made mention of it. We are now working together, and it's making a huge difference. People in Montgomery notice that, just like you've told us numerous times. They, they kind of shy away from you when you're not playing together. And so we're playing together, working together, and now things are getting done. So congratulations to the county for what y'all are doing. And I know you and David Hooks were down in Montgomery, working for the whole county. And we're, we're very appreciative of that, appreciate the collaborative effort. Also want to recognize our high school, Gaston City Titans, basketball, boys' and girls' teams are playing at Jacksonville in the subregionals. So we want to wish them all the luck in the world. We got a lot of confidence in, in them. We've got great coaches, great players, great cheerleaders, and we've got great students. And so safe travels back and forth to Jacksonville when that happens. And last but not least, y'all, for the first time in, I guess in memory, and I'm not saying this is the first time this has ever happened, but the first time that I can remember, we have a wrestler at Gaston City High School that's qualified for the state wrestling tournament. Nathaniel King is a ninth grader, okay, a 215-pound ninth grader. So he has qualified for the state wrestling tournament. And I understand, this is only his second year to wrestle. I think Josh Nelson must have saw him somewhere and said, you're gonna be a wrestler, because he looks like a wrestler. And he's 215 pounds, he's just a big kid. So, but he's only been wrestling for two years. That's an amazing accomplishment to go from, I've never wrestled before, and 24 months later, I'm in, I qualified for the state tournament. And, you know, we're a 6A school. He's wrestling against kids that have probably started wrestling when they were four years old. And so Gil Isbell was a wrestler in, in high school. Gil, Gil knows all too well what that means to be a ninth grader and to qualify for the state tournament. So that's a, that's just a big deal. So congratulations to Nathaniel King at Gaston City High School, and congratulations to the, and they were, they have other wrestlers that came real close to qualifying. Coach Nelson, Josh Nelson, has done a tremendous job with the wrestling team. So we're real proud of our wrestlers. And we wish all of these students the, just the best of luck and compete hard, and, and play well, and wrestle hard, and good things will happen. But thank you for being here today. Thank you for all that you do for the city of Gaston, and we will be adjourned.